Good evening, welcome. This is the April 11th, 2016, regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Plard?
Here.
Mayor Proton Reynolds? Mayor Campana?
Here. Okay, we have two Commissioners that are absent. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that Commissioners Frazier and Reynolds be excused from tonight's meeting due to illness.
Second? Commissioner Plard?
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Passes five zero. Next, we move to agenda changes. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do we have an approval for the agenda? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We come to announcements. First of all, I'd like to say that, as always, we have openings on many city committees. City committees is a chance for the people in the community, city residents, to, you know, serve the city. Hour a month, one hour a month, maybe two. But gets you involved, gets you something to do, gets you out of the house. Consider doing it. It's educational, it's interesting. Just contact City Hall, City Manager's Office will be glad to get you going. Outside in the hallway here, there's a list of the different committees and who's on it. Take a look at it and see if there's something that interests you. Second item I'd like to mention is that Lakeview Arena is in the running for the Craft Hockeyville USA competition. We had this last year and we didn't do too well. This year, we are in the top 10 at this point. If we get enough votes and we make the first cut, we're eligible for $10,000. If we make the second cut, it keeps going up and up until the point where we could win $150,000 and have an NHL preseason game here at Lakeview Arena. But we need the votes, so call Lakeview Arena or call the City Manager's Office to figure out how to vote. Obviously, you can go online and find it. So please, if you've got the time, five minutes, and do it, please. We also have an opening on the Iron Ore Heritage Trail Recreation Authority. A very good, very meaningful committee that takes care of the trail that runs all the way from, I think it's the casino, all the way to Republic. A very good organization. We need a city representative. It's another one of these committee involvements. And if anyone out there is interested in doing this, please let us know. Next, we move to boards and committees. We have one appointment. That would be Barb Coleman to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending 4/1/19. Is there a motion to appoint her? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we appoint Barbara Coleman Prescott Park Advisory Committee for a term ending 4/1/19.
Second? Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Discussion, any? Seeing none? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We have one appointment. That would be Robert Buzz Barrowby to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending 2/1/19. Is there a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we reappoint Robert Omar Barrowby II to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February 1st, 2019.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I second.
Comments? None? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay, tonight, we have two public hearings. Our first public hearing is a Duke Life Point Marquette General Hospital LLC Commercial Facilities Tax Exemption. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. As part of the memorandum of understanding and the purchase agreement between the city and DLP Market General Hospital LLC, it was agreed that a tax abatement for the purchased property would be applied for. At its regular meeting on October 26, 2015, the city commission established the property as a commercial redevelopment district. An application has been received by the city to request approval of a commercial facilities exemption certificate for DLP Market General Hospital LLC. This is a new facility certificate as outlined in Public Act 255 of 1978. The application is for property located in DLP Commercial Redevelopment District Number One as established by the Marquette City Commission on October 26, 2015. The property address for the application is 850 West Berga Avenue, Market, Michigan 49855. The city commission scheduled the public hearing at its March 28, 2016, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, this is a 12-year, 50% real property tax abatement for local millage only and has been budgeted for in the Brownfield work plan in amount of $11,121,504, an average of $926,792 per year. There'll be no financial impact due to the city's general fund or to any other taxing jurisdiction, and the Brownfield Authority has accounted for this amount in their work plans. Recommendation, after the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the commercial facilities tax exemption certificate for property owned by DLP Market General Hospital LLC located at 850 West Berga Avenue in the city of Marquette. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're going to open this public hearing. Before we get started on that, I would ask our Chief Financial Officer of the city, Gary Simpson, to explain what we're doing here tonight in layman's language. Gary?
Gee, that's kind of an open-ended question there. This is actually something that, very early on in the negotiations with the hospital, it was a really big selling point to keep them here in the city. And we just agreed that we would, you know, do everything we could to make this come to fruition. But basically, the property that they bought was previously owned by the city and it was therefore non-taxable. Now that the hospital owns it, it's a taxable property. And this is a tax abatement for 12 years for 50% of the local millage. This won't impact the city's general fund because for the first few years, the Brownfield is going to capture the taxes to pay for the redevelopment of the infrastructure and also to pay the bonds for our new municipal service center. So it's really kind of a win-win, we think. And like I said, very early on, we defined it as something that could potentially help keep the hospital here and they were very excited to hear that.
Thank you, Gary. Okay. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the commission in this public hearing, now's your time. You have three minutes. We would need your name, address, city or township. Anybody wish to address the commission?
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Kerrigan, 824 High Street, Marquette. Just in a brief point that I would like to make, I understand the city has a lot of considerations to take into play when you have large economic growth and expansion taking place. But we need to be mindful of the tax value and what the value of this community is worth in all aspects. We're being inundated within the township, within the counties, across the UP of stores through tax valuation. Are reducing the amount of tax revenue being brought into many of the communities across the UP and across the state of Michigan. As we consider these type of endeavors, just keep in mind that other tax revenues in basis are decreasing and as new businesses and business growth comes in, in the form of economic development, we have to consider the quality of life that many of us in the community have come to enjoy. And many of those, the value of those things and public services are coming through the tax dollars. So as much as I commend you guys for making those tough decisions about what happens in the community, we need to be mindful of regular and constant incoming value to keep our public services as needed and not to diminish those and diminish our quality of life here in Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing. Commissioners, we have a motion. Commissioner Baldini?
Your honor, I would move that we adopt the resolution approving the commercial facility tax exemption certificate for property owned by the DLP Marquette General Hospital LLC, which will be located at 850 West Berga Avenue in the city of Marquette.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
Discussion? Commissioner Baldini, anything?
This is nothing new. As Gary said, this is part of the plan that was adopted last year to keep the hospital in the city, to keep it going forward. It's a tax exemption, also part of the whole package of Brownfield and things of that nature. So this is not new. We have to do this to do the legal aspect and part of it with the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
This is another step that we need to take to keep the healthcare here in the city of Marquette. And this is, as Gary pointed out, this does not reduce taxes that go to our schools or our counties or 9/11, central dispatch and things like that. And it does not have an impact on the general fund because it's Brownfield money. And it does bring good jobs, good-paying jobs, not just in construction of this facility, but in employment for a long time to come and healthcare for our citizens.
Anybody else? Commissioner Kam Benzey?
I will be voting no on this. And my take all along has been that even though it's Brownfield money, it's state money. And state money is being cut for public schools, it's being cut severely for municipalities. So it does matter. I look at this as the whole picture. You know, we have property in a building that was worth well over 20 million. We got 4 million for it. You know, some of the other things in the purchase agreement, you know, paying rent to remain there for four months at $36,000, these are things that we could have negotiated much, much better. And so to give a 12-year tax break at almost a million dollars a year, I don't think we did our due diligence in negotiating a fair deal. And I would like to say, this was with a previous administrator, certainly not our current manager here now. S.R. Steele in Minnesota, if anyone's been following that, they missed their first $10 million payment. That was an economic development incentive payment that they missed back to the state of Michigan. Just as we want to attract and keep businesses, some of these businesses, and I would include the healthcare systems, are in a state of gamble. And it's been in the paper, a lot, a lot of people have had similar views on this. What's going to happen with healthcare in the next five years, 10 years? We don't know. But in order to make this entire deal that we signed work out, it's going to be 30 years that we need a taxable property to be here. And I just, the risk and uncertainty is too great. I've spoken a lot about it before. To Duke Life Point's, you know, to give them my respect, they have stockholders. We have stakeholders. I understand they want the best possible deal, but I really don't think that we, as a city, and I think the best way to do it is to involve the community more so that their voices are heard. We didn't do a good enough job negotiating, so I will be voting no on this.
Anybody else? Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, your honor. With serious consideration, and I mean that sincerely to Commissioner Kam Benzey's statements, I also agree with Commissioner Conley and Commissioner Baldini. This is part of the deal. It's something that really has to go through to make this deal work. The deal has been working very well, in my opinion, so far. And I see no reason why it's not going to continue that way. I think our city staff has done a good job of doing the research on this. And so in that case, I will support it.
I also think along the lines of Commissioner Plard, I do understand Commissioner Kam Benzey saying that maybe we could have gotten a better deal, but the fact is, we are where we are. We have to take what's there. I am in favor of this whole situation. I think that the people have to remember, the hospital wasn't paying taxes for all the years it was here. We only got, I think, two years of taxes out of them. Now we're giving away, we're going to give them a 50% tax break, okay? But after 12 years, we're going to get the full taxes. The other 50% goes to the Brownfield. And let me say that the money that is, we're talking about is coming from the hospital. They're paying, they're going to be paying the tax. We're not getting that, you know, it's their tax money. So in a way, they are paying us. Okay, so 50% goes to the Brownfield. The Brownfield turns around, gives it to, turns around, it's building, the service center, the roundabouts, roads, infrastructure, and we're getting a new hospital. So, you know, there's positives here. So, yeah, maybe we could have got a better deal, but I think we got a pretty good deal. You know, just having this hospital here and having the improvements that we're going to get with it, we're really not losing money. We're not losing money. You know, yeah, we could have gained more, but we are getting more. You know, we've got all these improvements. So I'm going to vote yes. Any other comments? Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you. I think in all the negotiations, I've been involved in a lot of them over the years, I always find the next morning, I think I can do better than I did the night before. And I always say, if I could have done this or that. But the other thing in this provision is, this was done in a previous, and I'm not passing the buck. And so we're here to sustain that plan and move forward with it. Also, there's a provision that if the hospital decides to, for some reason, to leave, they have to pay us. I mean, that we're just, we're not going to be left there with it. You know, I can't see them. They are a multinational organization with hospitals in many states. And I think everything they have demonstrated to us is of a positive nature and things that we can feel confident about them moving forward. I think we do have an obligation to keep an eye on the ball. That's our responsibility. And, but I do think that a plan was adopted a year or a year and a half ago. And to change that now, I think is impossible and would not be a fair game. We would not think it fair, and I don't think it would be fair for us to do the same thing. So, thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Kam Benzey?
I do believe we signed a tax increment financing agreement with just the hospital and the city. I do not believe it's Duke Life Point LLC. So right there, I had concerns, and I've certainly been the commissioner, working on this agreement the longest. It's a way to limit your liability in case something does go wrong. So to me, when you look at an agreement like this, you always want to look at the risk and uncertainty. And to me, along the way, there's just too much risk. You know, if they aren't going to make their payments, do we have the financial means to hire a lawyer to fight it? I would say we don't. Of course, you'd like to think that every business is going to come through and pay and make those payments. Sometimes it doesn't happen. Sometimes with these big companies, it doesn't happen. And so the recourse the city has, yes, we can fight it. But ultimately, the risk is if those payments aren't made, we lose out. So it's just, the risk and uncertainty is too great for me. I would have preferred that we signed every agreement with Duke Life Point, the parent company, and not just the hospital here in town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no more, we're going to vote. Excuse me, we're not going to vote. We're going to have a roll call vote. City Clerk, if you would.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
No.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That carries four to one. Okay, next, we're going to move to our second public hearing. And that is to consider the proposed amendments to the Downtown Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. After holding two work sessions on the topic of fences in the downtown waterfront district, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 16, 2016, to consider proposed amendments to the Downtown Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code and made the following motion. It was moved by P. Shogo, seconded by S. Laurie, and carried eight to zero to recommend that the city commission approve of the zoning ordinance amendment 01-0A-02-16. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Downtown Marquette Waterfront Form-Based Code and adopt ordinance number 637. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're going to open this public hearing. I would again want to ask Supervisor Dennis Stackwitz if he could explain a little bit what we're doing.
Sure thing, Mayor. The zoning ordinance amendments are for the Downtown Waterfront Form-Based Code, which is essentially from Front Street towards the lake, south of Ridge Street, and north of Founder's Landing. And this ordinance amendment will allow for decorative fences within that district. It was something that was an oversight when the code was originally adopted.
Thank you. Again, we are opening this public hearing. If any citizen wishes to address the commission at this point, please step to the podium. You have three minutes. We would need name, address, city or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point?
Good evening. You're in Malinkin and 8 Marquette Drive. Sounds like just a little bit of housekeeping, cleaning up some things that were not discussed earlier. I encourage you guys to go forward and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we adopt ordinance number 637 as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I second.
Thank you. Any comments?
This has gone before the Planning Commission. They've held a couple of hearings. They've evaluated it. It's their recommendation, I think by a vote of seven to zero, or eight to zero, to recommend it to us for our adoption. I think it also shows that they evaluated that things are changing in this part of town and needed to be upgraded to meet that. So I don't think it's terribly intrusive. It's probably, as was mentioned under public comments, sort of housekeeping. Thank you.
Commissioner Plard?
Yeah, I agree. It's pretty much updating the ordinance the way it stands. And we're putting in some new headings that we need, that we didn't have before, and taking and getting rid of some things that we found we didn't need. So it really is housekeeping.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, please say yes. We have a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes five zero. Okay, next, we have presentations. We have three presentations tonight. Our first presentation is the Marquette M-Bank Girls 19-under Hockey Team, who won the state 2016 Michigan Amateur Hockey Association. Okay, if we could have the coach and the team members at this podium over here, we'd like to congratulate them. This podium, over here. Yes. Coach Rabatell, perhaps you could give us a synopsis of what went on this year and what you've done and what you've accomplished with this team? Could you just step forward and give us an update, please?
I wasn't expecting so. I apologize.
Just what's going season when?
Well, as you can see, you know, besides being wonderful young hockey players, they're also wonderful young women. They're a very young team, so their future is bright. And this year, we not only won the state championship, but we won our league championship. So they've done very well. We don't have the highest of talent in the world, and we don't have the lowest talent in the world. We just have a group of kids that play as a team. We foster team environment, we foster team hard work. And that's what these guys are all about. They work really hard. When you talk about state championship game, we played a team we know very well, won, lost during the season. We got into the championship game. And they came prepared. And they hit the ice, and they played hard. And once we got a two-to-nothing lead early in the second period, I knew we weren't going to lose it. They just played that hard. You could see it in their faces, their determination, their drive is second to none. So if these guys are our future, we've got a great future ahead of us in this community. And they're wonderful young women, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have certificates that we'd like to present to each girl. I'll call the name, and Commissioner Conley here will hand them out. First on list, we have Lexi Anderson. Lexi? Why don't you just go to them?
Congratulations on Lexi.
Next, we have Annie Boyer. Sarah Cameron. Callie Dennis. Ashley Francis. Julian Fry. Brianna Holman. Julia Johnson. Sidney Lake. Mackenzie Masters. Dana Paquette. Alexis Rabatell. Hannah Swajinin. Sarah Reynolds was looking for you. And last, we have Hannah Zirps. Not here. We have coaches. We have Coach Anthony Rabatell.
Coach, congratulations. Great job. Thank you.
Doug Anderson.
Congratulations, Coach. Great job.
Stay here, have your picture taken. And give us a speech. We have Patrick Francis. Kenneth Holman.
It takes a tribe.
Greg Swajinin. And Natalie Weir. Did I say that right? Thank you. And lastly, we have the certificate for the Marquette M-Bank. It's a certificate of achievement for the 2016, again, Michigan Amateur Hockey Association, girls 19-and-under state champs. You know, it's not very often that a T- You know, it's not very often that a team wins a state championship. Whenever a team from the UP goes downstate and does this, we're all very proud of them. It doesn't happen a lot, so we're really, we're really proud of what you've accomplished. And we hope to see you back here next year. So, everybody get pictures. We get all the pictures we needed? Okay? These on the end, do we get them in? By chance, does anybody wanna say anything? Who's the talker in the group? Somebody's the talker. Just wanna say thank you or something, come on, you do. Anybody wanna say anything, just thank you, okay? You're all so, you're all too shy, who's, who's it? Mac? Who's Mac?
They're usually not too shy.
They're not, no, I know, I know. Yeah, I had a daughter, they're not too shy, I know. Okay, thank you very much, congratulations again. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, yeah, yeah. Okay, we now come to our second presentation of the night, which would be the Marquette Area Public Schools Bond Proposal. Superintendent Bill Saunders will lead us on this. Bill, if you take the podium to my right, please.
Am I allowed to pass these up to the audience? I don't know what the rules are, is that okay? If anybody wants one, take one, pass them all. First of all, let me say thanks to the commission, city manager, for your service and for your leadership. I know how hard and diligent you guys work, and judging by the length of the agenda, you have a long night tonight, so I'll try to keep it as short and sweet as possible. Always delighted to be able to come and talk about Marquette Area Public Schools, the destination district. Why the slogan, the destination district, for many reasons. I'd like to take just a quick moment and go through some facts and figures with you today. A couple of years ago, we used a billboard to try to put out there for a little bit longer length of time, some of the truly great accomplishments and achievements that we have going on from our students and our staff. And we weren't able to keep with the billboard. And I know a lot of folks, if you don't pick up a newspaper or catch the nightly news, may miss some of these things. But I think some of the facts and figures that I have to share with you today are pretty important. MAPS currently serves over 3,250 students. MAPS leads all schools in the county, most likely the entire UP, with over 340 school of choice students. Those 340 school of choice students are students that come to MAPS from outside our designated district boundaries. We have a rich tradition of having outstanding teachers and staff. This past year, Sarah Moyle was the MAPS Ed Foundation Teacher of the Year. Karen Bakula, high school science teacher, was the Sigma Chi Science Teacher of the Year. Erica Morrison, an elementary teacher from Grayverett, was the Marquette Elder Reading Council Teacher of the Year. And our Kiwanis Teachers of the Year were Amanda Erstbaumner, Lance Whitfield, and Mary Bengree. Over 170 MAPS students received some type of scholarship last spring for outstanding achievements in the classroom, for vocational training, or for their extracurricular or fine arts excellence. This year's high school students again led all area schools, scoring better than the state and Marissa wide averages on the Michigan Merit Exam and also on the ACT. We had the top scores in every category, social studies, writing, reading, math, and science. Our fine arts programs, including band, orchestra, and choir, routinely rate as one of the top programs at their respective festivals and qualify for state recognition. As a side note, orchestra and choral also traveled to Germany and Austria this past year as part of their development. Our alternative high school received the Michigan Association of School Boards Education and Excellence Award, and that's been three years running that they've received that award. As a district, we're moving forward with a one-to-one initiative in which each student will be assigned a Chromebook to help further advance their education. Two years ago, the MAPS Education Foundation piloted a one-to-one initiative for us for all fifth grade students. They purchased 275 Chromebooks. This current school year, we expanded that program to include sixth and seventh grades, so we purchased another 600 Chromebooks. And this spring, we're due to purchase 2,400 Chromebooks to make sure each student has a Chromebook for their, for their education. I'm also very proud of our students' efforts to help those areas of need in our community. Students collected thousands of pairs of socks for the Rock the Socks campaign, raised thousands of dollars to fight hunger in their Empty Bowls Community Luncheon, and held several dances to raise thousands of dollars for Harbor House. This is to name just a few areas. There are hardly a week or month that goes by without some sort of fundraising for local charities and organizations. Again, congratulations to the hockey team. I recognize several Marquette students there. We also had, as part of our athletic successes this year, a few teams that won championships as well. Our boys Alpine Ski Team, UP and Michigan High School Athletic Association, all state champions. This was the fourth year, I believe, in a row, so our coach is starting to challenge Red Auerbach and John Wooden for championships, as long as he keeps going. He has most of his boys back, so he's pretty excited. The girls Alpine Ski Team also won the Michigan High School Athletic Association All-State Championship. Our girls figure skating team, all state champions. Boys Swimming Team, UP champions. Boys Soccer Team, UP champions. Girls Cross Country, UP champions. Girls Basketball Conference and District Champions. Our boys varsity hockey team, regional champions. And our boys bowling team, UP tournament champions. As another little side note, we also service over 550 special needs students, or one in six of our student population. A number of these students come to us also as school of choice students because we have such an outstanding program and are able to have those type of services to meet the needs of each and every child. With that, I'd like to just bring up the bond proposal that we have coming up on May 3rd. I think each of you have a little flyer that we were able to put out. The engine behind the bond proposal for our Marquette Area Public Schools was the increase in current student enrollment. Going back four years ago, we had just 3,000 students, just over 3,000 students, Marquette Area Public Schools, and again, over 3,250 students today. Very few communities, certainly in the UP, very few communities in the state over the last four years could probably claim that they have an increase in enrollment. With declining birth rates, you know, a lot of jobs and things moving out of the state of Michigan, most schools are experiencing decline in enrollment. So, we're kind of an anomaly here in Marquette, something to be very proud of. And again, I thank the commission, our city leadership. I think that it says a lot about Marquette Area Public Schools, but it also says a lot about the community of Marquette, that businesses are looking to locate here. People are moving into the community for jobs. And certainly, when they do that, they have choices, but they're choosing to bring their students to Marquette Area Public Schools. So, what that's done, that over 200 student gain for us has really created a classroom pinch for us at the elementary level. So, currently, we're experiencing a lack of elementary classroom space. Three of our four elementary buildings are full to really above capacity. We had to convert two computer labs in two of our elementary schools this year to accommodate those increasing class sizes. So, that was really the engine behind looking at a bond and being able to make some of those improvements. A couple other needs that really stand out for us. One is auxiliary gym space at our high school. About 10 years ago, we had the combined sports seasons, the flip-flop, where they put boys and girls basketball during the same season. That, we've never truly recovered from that Michigan High School Athletic Association decision. We currently have 23 teams from 13 different sports trying to share gym space. And that's just from an athletic point. We have our fine arts programs, you know, that require gym space, and a lot of other community enrichment type activities that we try to host. And it's really created some pretty serious issues as far as space usage goes, to the point where we have a lot of different sports teams that routinely have to cancel their sports practices or schedule them very, very late at night. We have many sports teams that don't even begin practices until nine o'clock at night, which is way too late on school nights to be conducting athletic practices. So, we'd certainly like to add an auxiliary gymnasium to our high school campus. We'd like to make some upgrades to our football and track stadium. Early 2001, 2002 was the last time we were able to host the UP Track and Field Finals, with some minimal upgrades to the track and the football complex. We hope to, again, compete for the UP Track Finals, something that would be great for the, for the school system, but I think also great for the community. Thousands of people attend that event over that weekend, and it would be great for local businesses, local community. And all these things, as we try to host, whether it be the auxiliary gym, things like that. For Marquette to be the center for regional quarterfinal, semifinal-type competitions, or even state championship-type competitions, certainly a feather in our cap, but a feather in the cap of the community as well. And so, we would like to move forward with that. A couple other areas we'd like to improve, Chyrus Planetarium. Built, they're actually celebrating their 50th year anniversary. It was completed one year after the high school was built. And we didn't have the ADA codes and restrictions that we do today. And we haven't been able to update the Planetarium in this time period. So, we would like to make some, some much-needed ADA upgrades to that. It's all steps. Right now, if we have anybody in a wheelchair, we end up having to carry them and try to get them into our facility, and that's certainly not, not best for us. And again, we don't have the ADA accessible restrooms for that facility either. Probably another one that's a real highlight is a state-of-the-art computer lab. It's really called the Computer Makers Lab. And this is really where education's going, this is where a lot of the jobs are going. A lab that's gonna prepare students for today's technology careers. One of the biggest areas is 3D printing. But to also have a huge focus on coding, programming, movie making, and robotics. And one of the things we would like to be able to do with the passing of the bond, if the bond were to pass, would be to construct a state-of-the-art, again, computer makers lab for the, for the district. And the last piece is Kaufman Auditorium, a true gem, a jewel for the entire city. We would like to make some, some upgrades to the dressing rooms at the Kaufman Auditorium. Just a couple other things, I know probably the biggest thing is always the cost. Here's a new bond, what's, what's the cost gonna be for, for the bond that we're proposing? Comes at really probably an ideal time. We have a current millage that exists on the construction of Cherry Creek and Superior Hills on the elementary school. That was a millage that was passed and supported by the community in 1994. Started out at a 2.9 mil rate, and over time, we've been able to refinance that and pay more on the principal, so that mill has continued to decrease to where it's .58 mils today. That is about ready to fall off the books. And so, while the bond that we're proposing is a new bond, it really plays out like an extension of that bond. That bond is gonna fall off the books, this bond would essentially replace that. And as a community, the millage rate that we would pay, currently 1.5 mils, would remain at 1.5 mils over the next three years. Then as we continue to pay more on, the old bond drops off, and the new bond continues to pick up. But as we continue to pay more on the principal of the new bond, that millage rate would continue to decline. And you can see that in the red graph that we were able to put together for you. So, we're roughly about 1.5 mils over the next three years. Then they would drop down to 1.48 mils, 1.47, and so on. To be honest, this certainly is a tax that would, would take place over the next 15 years. That current bond would drop off after 2019. So, it is certainly an extension of that and continued taxes over that period of time. And now, if I can open it up to maybe questions?
Thank you, Bill, thank you, very good presentation. Commissioners, do we have any comments? Commissioner Kimbensey?
Two questions and then one comment, I guess I'll start with my comment. And that is that I just learned recently that the Chyrus Planetarium that's attached to our high school was part of a National Science Foundation grant, a really large grant back in 19, when was it, 19, the late 1960s. Only 250 high schools were awarded this grant to install planetariums. You know, this was after we put a man on the moon and space exploration really began to pique our interest. Our Planetarium is, I believe, one of only about 100 left in the nation that is fully functioning. And our Planetarium at MAPS actually serves the entire region. We have schools coming from as far as Houghton and Wakefield. They do have one in the Sioux, but it's not, not quite up to par. So, to think that we're gonna put some money back into this if the bond is approved, I hope the community gets there, because it really is a gem, just like many of the other things Mr. Saunders mentioned. Two questions. One I get is, people might not know the difference between this bond extension proposal and the one they voted on before. Maybe the difference between the kinds of things we're fixing?
Sure, sure. So, to your question, I think the one you were talking about before is the operational millage that we just had two years ago. The operational millage really went to our needs as far as infrastructure goes. Boilers, windows, roof, some new parking lots, thing like, things like that. This would be more building anew. Now, neither one, whether it be the sinking fund or this bond, would be used to pay, you know, employee salaries, anything like that. But, and I'll be honest, even we didn't, going back, looking at our projections about four years ago, anticipate the type of student boom that we would have. As we forecasted, moving forward over the next five years, we anticipate another 100 student increase in our enrollment over the next five years. So, our forecasters did take into account the closing of the Empire Mine and some other local economic factors. And I think, you know, that still is kind of prudent as we move forward to know that we still have that level of family moving to, to the Marquette area to accept jobs and to enroll their kids in school. But back to your question, as far as the sinking fund and the bond goes, that sinking fund was really designated towards those, those infrastructure needs. And now, we're taking another step in, in, in building anew and really addressing some of the things that, that were cut from the sinking fund as well. If we go back about five or six years ago, the district went to the public and tried to pass a bond for about $30 million. And overwhelmingly, that bond was voted down, a high cost. And through that, we generated a strategic planning process, probably 80 to 100 folks in the community that joined our strategic planning process. We looked at realignment of the district, and I think that's been a real strength. As I talked earlier today, to go back to a K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 structure, I think was very important for us as a district. Families felt comfortable that we had got past the stage where we were shifting kids depending on where we had room or where we were lacking room in our buildings. At one time, we have four- At one time, we have fourth and fifth graders in our middle school. And, you know, I think when we got our alignment right, it sent a message to the community that certainly was a good place to enroll their students in Marquette area public schools. So, that's helped immensely. From there, we went from realignment to a facilities committee. And we took a look at our facilities and what we had done, we had surveyed the community to see what alignment they really desired. We implemented that alignment. The next step was, we had asked through that survey if the community would be willing to support those infrastructure upgrades that we needed. And that's where the sinking fund was born. But we were also cognizant of what that was going to cost the taxpayer. The sinking fund list we had, if memory serves me correctly, was about twenty-two million. And we cut that down to just over ten million dollars. So, the auxiliary gym and some of the other things on here were part of that original list that we had for the sinking fund that we had cut at that point in time, just to, again, make that a little bit more saleable.
Well, one comment I have heard is that people like the creativity, the strategic planning that's gone into keeping the millage rate basically flat. And so, I think those involved in that process, you know, should be commended for that. The only other question I hear is, when looking at the classroom space, people are wondering, why can't we just reopen Vannan Boom as an elementary school? And I think people don't understand why the committee said that's not really the best option.
Sure, and a couple of different reasons. Again, let's go back to that realignment and going back to the K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. At that point, we had a choice between Vannan Boom and Graveuret. Graveuret gave us more options. It had more space. It was more of a, dare I say, community neighborhood-type school. We looked at the population of where kids were living at that point in time. And it was easier to bring Graveuret back. And of course, we did survey the community again and had, and it was overwhelmingly seventy-five percent to twenty-five percent to use Graveuret as that elementary school. But again, we had an immediate population around that school of about three-hundred students that we were going to be able to repopulate that with. We didn't have that population around Vannan Boom. So, that's one of the reasons for that choice. But as we did that, the previous resident of Graveuret was the Alternative High School. So, we had to find a new home for Marquette area Alternative High School. We found that home at Vannan Boom. If we were to bring Vannan Boom back on as an elementary school, they really wouldn't now have a home. We'd be searching for a solution to where we would locate our Alternative High School. Probably just as important, since we've already gone through that whole realignment, had families, you know, you live on this side of the street, you're going to this school. You live on this side of the street, you're going to the other school. We've made all those decisions. People have adjusted. To now go back and bring Vannan Boom back on is what would be a fifth elementary school, would cause us to completely redistrict everything one more time. And I think that turmoil would be very difficult. We'd have to restaff that then and add another principal, secretaries, other things to really restart a new school. By adding on to the other elementary schools, we already have administrative teams in place, secretaries, those types of things. So, long-term, that's the most fiscal responsible thing that we could do, would be to add on to the current elementary schools that we have.
Commissioner Paul Dini.
Thank you. Couple of exciting things with this. For example, with Silver Creek and Lake Superior, both of those elementary schools were built and their footprint placed in such a manner that they could be expanded.
Yes.
And I speak with that because I was there then, floating, helping to float that millage issue and build those buildings. And the idea was that Marquette was going to grow. And we were going to need some extra space at those schools. And it was better to expand than to put in new principals and secretaries and a whole new staff. And so, it's good to see that coming through. It's also exciting to see that the track is going to be renovated so that it can compete again for the UPs. That used to be an exciting time in the community, brought a lot of people in. We used to have some nice sunny days and some very cold days at those track meets. But we survived and it brought a lot, a lot of people here. And people preferred Marquette because it was much more centrally located. But also, I think what people don't realize is the element of security that's had to go into schools across the nation. And that's something you just don't talk about. You just sort of go and do it, and it's there. But it's exciting to see what you're doing and having spent a number of years at the schools, it's good to see that. And it's also interesting to note, for those of you who are old enough to realize this, the high school is fifty-one years old this year. Some of us who started there in its second year of existence don't think it's that old. But it's in great shape. And the reason it is, is because you've maintained it and you've put money into it. And it's a better investment to maintain than to try and duplicate them. So, I think it's rather exciting. It's exciting for the community. And it's exciting for, you know, the Marquette District of Choctaw, Marquette Township, and Marquette City. And so, it's an exciting time, so. And it's good to see the way you're able to regulate the millage.
Commissioner Conley.
Thanks for coming tonight. And I'm glad we're able to have this conversation, having suffered under the gag rule for temporarily. Though, we can talk about it. And hopefully, this continues. But thank you for coming because we're all on the same team here. We try to bring jobs and economic growth to this community, but that isn't going to happen unless you and your board and your teachers and staff provide good schools. People look at that before they come to Marquette and become a part of our community for us. So, thank you. And then, there isn't anything else we can invest in that's more important than our kids.
Thank you.
Bill, thank you very much. I think you just made a couple of good points. To me, anyway, number one, you know, the matter of fact that good schools bring people to the community. So, if you want people moving in, and I know, I talk to people that come here for the first time, and all you got to do is ask them, if you have children, you know, why Marquette? And one of the reasons, one of many, is that we have good schools here. So, that's very important. I mean, if this community is going to grow and prosper, having a good school to educate their children is really important. The other thing is, this is not a new tax. It's a continuation of what we have, so we're not paying anything more. It's a continuation. And in fact, over the years, it'll drop. So, you know, it's not a new sting, so, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioners? Commissioner Plard.
I just want to say that the UP Finals in Kingsford nowadays, I'd love to bring it back to Marquette as well. My son ran in the UP Finals back in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine. It was a lot of fun here in Marquette, so.
Well, Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Okay, we come to our third and final presentation of the night, which is the Board of Light and Power Project Update. Will be given to us by Vice President of the Project, or Project Director Chuck Bidel from the company Sargent &amp; Lundie. I would like to have Board of Light and Power CEO Paul Kitty introduce his members here and start us off.
Thank you for the gracious invitation to all the commissioners, Honorable Mayor Mike Angeli. It's a pleasure to work with you folks. What's really kind of neat is we've got Jerry Erby here, John Reynolds, our Chief Engineer, Ken Mixer from Sargent &amp; Lundie, and also Chuck Bidel, the Vice President. I have to say a little bit waxing nostalgia here because I ran into the UP Finals years ago when Calumet brought down some power hoses. I always held in Marquette then. You were right. It was cold and windy, and we had a few nice days, but it was always a great trip. And I'm thinking about, I had two boys that went to Marquette Public Schools. And I think the quality of education is pretty good. I'm not going to blow smoke their way, but they're both ER trauma doctors. One's in California, one's downstate, so they got a pretty good education. My wife's a retired nurse from Marquette General, and that's kind of neat that's going on. And at least she tells me that, Dr. Conley, you always said that she was your favorite nurse. I don't want to put you on the spot. But, and I did like the theme of Marquette Senior High School, talking about a center of polytechnic excellence. That's what I like to say from the Scandinavian world. They have polytechnics here, and that's what we're developing with the robotics, some of the pre-engineering and that. It's really neat, so you need, when, I'm just going to tell you from our standpoint, we need to support our schools and get out there and support them. They're really good, so. I've got living testimony on that, but, at any rate, and then the hockey connection with the team right here. Our son played hockey down here for the Electricians and the Legion and with all those folks. And had great coaching on that, and you can see where these young people are going to go. In a combination of the hockey and sports world. You know, the early mornings, late-night practices, pretty rough stuff. But it's kind of like the business that we're in. We're up twenty-four-seven. The only bone I got to pick publicly with public schools is that they cancel too often. We never did up in Calumet. You know, we just, we toughed it out. But at any rate, I know the world is changing. But having said that, I just want to thank everybody again for all the support and really pleased to have Chuck Bidel and Ken Mixer in town for a few days. Professional consultants from Sargent &amp; Lundie, they're doing a fantastic job. And we hope, on behalf of our Board of Directors, our employees, that we can continue to do a fantastic job to earn your respect and your confidence every day as we provide reliable, safe, affordable energy for years to come. So, having said that, Chuck, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Paul.
It's all yours, but I had to editorialize a little bit. That's the problem when I get in front of a microphone. Thanks.
As Paul said, I'm Chuck Bidel with Sargent &amp; Lundie. Sargent Lundie is a full-service engineering and design firm with a history about as long as the Board of Light and Power. We've been around since eighteen ninety-one, and we serve thousands of clients worldwide with a substantial US base. Our headquarters are in Chicago. I've been involved with the Board of Light and Power in this project for almost a year now. Our work began with a generation planning study to assess what type of additional generating assets were needed to address reliability concerns with the existing power supplies here in Marquette. The study concluded that the proper technology selection involved the installation of reciprocating engine generators, about fifty megawatts of power. And this is not an uncommon solution for municipal power. Very recently, the city of Rochester, Minnesota, decided to award a similar size of power generation of this type to Sargent &amp; Lundie and Bolt Construction, and we're beginning that work as well. So, this is a common solution for municipal, under-one-hundred-megawatt power generation. If I could get the slide presentation going here, do I hit a button or something? There we go. The first slide that you see up here is a rendering from our three-dimensional computerated design model showing the three seventeen-megawatt reciprocating engines located in an engine hall along with some of the other features of the site. I'll be going into the details here with an annotated slide shortly, but I wanted to lead off with just a rendering of what this facility will look like when it's completed. So, how did we get here? The reliability concerns that Paul and John and the rest of the board have been looking at for years now are very valid concerns. This grid is at some risk of reliability problems, primarily due to the potential retirement of the Prescott Isle Power Plant owned by We Energies, as well as a possible loss of the transmission tie line from ATC, which is fed from downstate Wisconsin. Obtaining firm transmission guarantees from those downstate providers has not been possible as of late. The board has aging assets. Chyris Units One and Two are very old units.
Excuse me, excuse me. They can't hear you at home unless you're by the microphone, so if you could possibly stay close to it.
I'll do that, yes, thank you. I can use the cursor here. Chyris One and Two are aging assets, and Unit Two will not be fully environmentally compliant after 2017. There's also a lot of uncertainty regarding potential transmission plans from downstate Wisconsin. There's been a lot of press about a 345 KV line supplying this region, but those plans have not fully materialized. And a large transmission project like that can take anywhere from three to five years to develop. So, the project concluded that new generation here in Marquette was a good solution, and we're in the process of executing that. One co-benefit that I'll mention is that the type of technology that's being installed, the reciprocating engines, it pairs very well with potential future renewables expansion. And by renewables, I mean solar and wind generation. Many smaller municipalities have taken an approach that looks at wind and solar as a possible future means of obtaining electric power. And this type of engine technology will provide for that. Just a brief schedule update. I mentioned we've been working on this study since May of 2015. As far as recent developments go, the bonding approval is nearly obtained. I think the expectation is that's going to be received sometime in the month of April. So, the project will be fully funded. Wartzilla, who is the supplier of the engine generators, will receive their full notice to proceed shortly after the bonding approval is obtained. We've been working very hard on the civil underground work package specification. This consists of all the design drawings and specifications needed to install foundations, underground piping, storm drain systems, site grading, and drainage provisions, as well as establishing the lay-down areas that will be needed to stage all of the construction materials. Later on this year, there will be a second labor work package, which is all of the above-ground work. The above-ground work consists of the building construction to house the engines, as well as all of the electrical equipment, the engines themselves, the ductwork, stacks, and all of the associated auxiliary facilities needed to support the three engines that are going to be installed on-site. Wartzilla expects to ship those machines later this year, sometime in the third quarter. They're expected to arrive in downtown Marquette by ship and be offloaded onto a barge. The barge will then be beached near Wright Street, and the machines will be trucked down Wright Street to their future home near the Board of Light and Power's current offices on Wright Street. There will be a lot of heavy construction above grade going on in the third quarter and fourth quarter of this year, as well as into early next year, with the machines being in service in the second quarter of 2017. Currently, the project is on schedule. We're seeing opportunities to improve on the schedule, and we're looking forward to an on-time, successful project. I mentioned I would get back to the overall arrangement of the facility and cover some of the features for your benefit. The three engines are located in this engine hall right here. It's a large building with sound-absorbing walls to minimize any impacts to the surrounding area. It's got NOx removal systems to clean up the emissions from the machines. There are three exhaust stacks located to the east. We've got some pumps and storage tanks out here to the east as well to supply oil and other chemicals to the facility. Our main power transformer ties into the sixty-nine KV power system located off to the west here. And here we have the electrical building, which houses all of the switchgear, motor control centers, and smaller transformers. All the way to the north are the radiators, which remove the heat generated by the engines. These are low-noise radiators, and the idea is to minimize any impacts to the surrounding area in terms of noise. In terms of recently completed activities, the air permit's been approved. That happened quicker than expected. The site general arrangements were completed, and they were frozen in place to allow the detailed engineering to really begin. The site general arrangements were completed and they were frozen in place to allow the detailed engineering to really begin. The generator step-up transformer was awarded to Waukesha. We received the geotechnical reports to support foundation designs. Geotechnical reports consist of soil analysis so that the right type of foundations can be implemented. We designed the engine hall building. We purchased, or we've issued procurement specifications for that engine hall and we are currently reviewing bids. We are also now receiving bids for the 350,000-gallon fuel oil storage tank that's located immediately to the east of the engine hall on site. We are in the middle of the noise modeling effort. This is being done by a subcontractor to Sergeant Lundie called Shiner and Associates. They are experts at modeling noise sources and mitigating their effect on the surrounding area. We've also completed a dispatch study and this dispatch study determines how these new generating assets will be dispatched relative to Shyrus Station as well as your existing combustion turbine generator. Near-term activities, the bonding effort should wrap up soon. We'd like to award the engine hall, award the fuel oil storage tanks. We'll be going out for bids in some of the smaller miscellaneous buildings and trying to get those awarded. We are gonna be going out for bids for the underground civil general work contract for all of the foundations and underground piping in the very near term. We're expecting that to happen in the next one to two weeks. We're gonna complete the noise evaluation and start designing all of the acoustical measures designed to mitigate the impact to the surrounding area. There's also a process contract change in place with Wartzilla. Wartzilla offered up a couple of existing engine blocks that were available that had already been completed and they are no different than what was ordered, so Wartzilla was willing to provide a substantial discount and extend the long-term warranty on the machines to the Board of Light and Power by accepting these machines. So kind of an unexpected, nice cost savings there for the project, really, really kinda came out of the blue, but it's a real help. Just a few key issues, we wanna expedite the award of that engine hall. We wanna make sure the buildings are on-site and ready to be built by the September timeframe. This will ensure that they can be erected and all of the interior work can be done as the weather turns bad. This will maximize the productivity of the workforce that's, that's doing all of the interior piping and electrical systems. We've adjusted the procurement strategy for the project a little bit to try to get the project out of the ground quicker. That adjustment was, in fact, to have a standalone civil general work contract and issue that now instead of later. This way, foundations will be done and we'll be ready to build buildings and install machines come third quarter. We wanna try to avoid having the underground labor contractor and the above-ground building and machine and piping labor contractor on top of each other, so the idea is to dovetail these two labor contracts together. The first one wraps up in September, the next one mobilizes late September, early October. That'll minimize any impacts those two contractors might have on each other. And we are actively working with the board to have a means to really track potential scope changes to this project. Not everything is known to be firm when you start out a project like this. We know a lot, we don't know everything. We're trying to make sure that any scope deviations that come up are addressed and identified and that money that doesn't have to get spent, doesn't get spent. And so far, that's been keeping us on track financially with this project and we expect that to continue. Here's a high-level summary of the procurement status of the project. I'm not gonna go line by line in the interest of time, but green and check marks means we're done with it. The ones that are, that are marked as blank are in progress, are items that still have yet to be done. But this snapshot just gives you an idea of how we're doing in terms of making all of the necessary contracts that are needed to get the materials and equipment out to the site in order to build this facility. So you can see, we're in the thick of things right now. We may not have broken much ground out there, but we're about 35% done with the engineering on the project, moving quickly towards 40%, and a lot of the procurement activities for major items is really already done. Checks have been cut, contracts have been awarded, and things are moving fast. Basically, what's left is the, the labor contracts to build it, some performance and, performance and inspection items. And one new item here, we've determined based on the geotechnical survey results that there's a need to compact the soil a little bit more in order to minimize cost. So that's, that's a contract that was somewhat unexpected. The, the project is gonna start on that in the next few weeks. Labor contractors are the, the biggest part of this, this price here for the project. So the idea is we wanna get those labor contracts underway as quickly as possible. Things that are gonna be considered when determining the bid list for that work is, do they have prior experience erecting this type of engine or similar, similar power projects? Are they financial stable and are they big enough to complete the project successfully? I think having experience in Michigan with, with the local unions is important. I think working in cold climates is important. We don't want a contractor that's never worked this far north in the month of January, so that's a key criteria as well. We wanna make sure they've got great construction management capability and there may be some other criteria that the board weighs in on as we move forward with developing those bid lists. Just to give you an idea of, you know, who's maybe being considered right now, and this is not a final list, a few, a few names here that you may recognize, a few, few firms that have done work with the board before. We're in the process of refining that bid list and getting that work package out on the street so that we can really start breaking ground out there. We're expecting groundbreaking for the, for the, for the project to really begin in around the June timeframe. We wanna streamline the bid list down to about five or six bidders. We think that's plenty and we think that'll really allow things to move fairly quickly. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come out here today. It's my pleasure to, to give you all an update on how things are going. I think they're going well, I think we're on schedule, I think we're, we're on budget and my team is certainly enjoying working with the board and the city of Marquette on this project. So thank you very much.
Chuck, thank you. Good presentation. Commissioners, do we have any comments, any questions? Commissioner Ken Benzey.
Okay, just a few questions and most of them, I guess I have written down on the project driver page, that second page. But the, the loss of MISO firm transmission, we could get that, but we would have to buy it, correct? I think it's pricey.
I think you'd have to pay a large fee, as I understand it.
Yeah, it's not available yet.
Okay.
ATC is talking 2019. John, you want to... Firm transmission is not available yet. ATC is talking 2019 or later to get that.
And, but the price, I think, was...
About $3 million a year.
And we would get nothing, we wouldn't be investing in anything, we'd just be getting...
Right, we would have rights to the transmission line, so that's no power, that's just capacity.
Okay, and I, that's one thing that, you know, as you add that up, okay, you know, I look at this financially and it's like, well, I don't wanna pay an extra fee like that. So that's one thing, you know, from when the Board of Light and Power was here before to now has set in for me. You know, when you talk about the uncertainty regarding that 345 KV expansion line, I mean, to me, it's the same thing. Why, it, it doesn't make sense, the cost on that is prohibitive, if you ask me. It's just unrealistic and I think, you know, the, the right plan all along has been to do more of a regional, you know, power substations in the U.P. and so...
And if you wait on the outside world, you really don't know when all that's gonna happen. In the meantime, we're at risk with all these uncertainties.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with the announcement of the mine shutting down, I mean, you were, the Board of Light and Power was very careful in terms of, you know, do we co-partner? Do we, do we do something with the mines? You know, when that news came out, more uncertainty that kind of leaves us, do we, do we do this, do we not? You know, so to me, it's another, another thing that reaffirmed this plan that happened recently. The third thing from this page, you know, the co-benefit that it pairs well with wind and solar and I think there's a huge interest in this area to see more of that. And I think the, the utilities that are most successful are the ones that are really embracing that and, and taking the lead on that.
We've had a lot of interest in the solar, I believe all over 200 interested parties that wanna buy a share in the solar farm that we're, we're gonna build.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that's another positive thing that, you know, these units will be compatible with that and I think that is a big, a big plus. You know, the question in the meantime is, as technology is coming so fast and people want it, how do we, you know, how do we partner with these large ratepayers in the community so that, you know, maybe if they wanna try more solar or more alternative energy, how do we, I guess, accommodate them while still providing that reliability? I know it's, it's a tough question.
We would work through each of those individually, but we do have the machines, when we put these in, that will be able to follow load, so during the night, we can ramp these up when the solar diminishes and goes out, you know, or wind, vice versa, with wind.
Okay, and then one other question I get from a lot of people is why not put these Wartzilla engines where the current coal plant is? And the only thing I can think of is the, the line, the gas line and the dimension of it and...
Yeah, we looked at building down there, but we would have to move existing infrastructure and the price got really high.
Okay.
So if you do it on a green field like we're doing, you really can lower the cost.
Okay, and then...
So that was the main driver.
Okay.
And we still have existing units down there, Unit 2 and 3, that we would be working around, that, that gets tough.
Okay, I, I like that within a matter of time, we'll, we'll have a more diverse portfolio. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction. As most people have said, it's just the big increase at once and that's, you know, that's the hardest part for people to stomach, but I think I've heard a lot more people coming to terms with, you know, what we had to do in terms of doing this, so I, I do have a lot of questions, I think about calling you a lot, so... I might come bug you soon.
Feel free to call.
Commissioner Conley, John, stay up there, please.
I'd like to thank Sergeant Lundie for coming up and, and giving us this update, this progress update on a vital project to our community. It'll provide us reliable power with control that is local. I see here that you're, we're coming close to choosing a contractor, which means that will determine where the labor comes from. And I'd just like to comment, nobody works better outside than a Uber. So I'd like to hear from you, are you looking, is this part of your criteria to, to bring, to keep our labor local so that we're, this project will support our local community and the jobs? And also, are these contracts being bid at prevailing wage?
To answer that question, the, I think the intention is to competitively bid the project with the expectation that local union labor will be used. The bid list has some very local suppliers in terms of Gunlock Champion, CR Meyer, those might be names you know that are very, very, you know, strong presence in this area. But I think in order to get, you know, a good batch of competitive bids, it's being opened up to, you know, other firms as well with a, with a regional focus like maybe a Bolt Construction or a, or a Myron. But yeah, the intention is to, to use local labor as much as possible. I think anybody that comes in here and executes this project is gonna go, go to the local halls and, and get the folks that, that have performed well here locally. And those, those bids are gonna be evaluated as they, as they come in here in the, in the month of May.
Commissioner Baldini.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had two questions, one following up on Commissioner Conley's, the question of local labor and prevailing wage. I, I mean, there are some companies that are probably very technical that you have to bring in from elsewhere, but obviously, there's great interest in our, our workforce who is bonding for this project to, to be involved in, in the jobs of it and especially with prevailing wage. Are you gonna use prevailing wage?
Yes, that is correct. The, the project has been estimated and budgeted based on prevailing wage. That is the wage we would expect any labor contractor bidding on this project to use and that, that can certainly be checked as we look over the bids.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, you're gonna move those generators from Wright Street down the street. I suspect that they don't clip down the street at 25 miles an hour. How long is it gonna take you? I mean, I'm just thinking, 'cause a lot of trucks, I mean, that's, Wright Street has become quite the, the place and I'm assuming you will work with our police department to arrange, 'cause we will have to divert traffic or something. How long do you think it'll take, a day, two days?
The, the type of equipment that these machines will be moved on is, is a, is a, called a Goldhofer-type transport vehicle. It's multi-wheeled, it moves at around one to two miles an hour. So you're looking at, you know, hours to move a generator from the lakefront to the site, not, not days.
Actually, we're looking at moving them at night also, with police escorts and everything.
So we've been working with the city on that part of it, so we'll continue to work with them.
Commissioner Ken Benzey.
One other quick question, 'cause I know our city staff have gotten phone calls and they've been asked about this, but the, the noise evaluation and then the emissions, those are two things that people in the neighborhood seem to want, want to know about. So there's gonna be a noise evaluation, but maybe the emission stuff was already given or not yet?
As far as emissions go, the, the engines are equipped with, with an exhaust system that, that cleans up the gas. It's kinda a little bit like your car, it's got a catalytic removal system that takes out the nitrogen oxides, which, which can, you know, those can create problems if, if they're emitted to the environment. The emissions from these are very, very low. I think these machines will be considered, you know, the, the best of their, of their type in terms of low exhaust emissions, particularly when firing on natural gas. The, they're, they're very low emission to begin with and they're further cleaned up in those, those catalytic reactors on the back end. In addition, the stack height was selected to be taller than what the minimum mandated by the permit so that it'll provide a little bit of cushion there in terms of any, any, any emissions. So there's no, no free lunch in terms of generating with fossil fuels, but this type of technology is about as good as it can get in terms of, in terms of reciprocating engines.
And compared to the, the coal-fired power plants, I mean, is it like a tenth of the carbon? I mean, it's, it's considerably less.
Oh, it's substantially less. Just as an example, you know, the, the amount of generation that you get out of a unit of fuel going in, it's about a 50% increase in efficiency from any of your existing generating assets. So it's, it's a, it's a big, big game changer in terms of how, how low cost it will be to generate power here in Marquette, as well as in how many emissions you're gonna have, 'cause you're gonna burn less fuel. It's a, it's a great technology. A lot of people have really embraced it at the, at the municipal and electric cooperative level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Baldini.
Question, you're on interruptible natural gas, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner, yes.
Any anticipation of how many, how much or how many trucks you might have to use sort of during the year on that street, that road?
Just order of magnitude, based on a, you know, a capacity factor on oil of less than, say, 20%, which I think would be normal. I don't think you're gonna sit there and run on oil for extended periods of time. But you're, you're talking, you know, between five and 15 trucks per day, depending on how much you're running those units. So it is, it's, it's a lot of traffic. If you're gonna run, you know, full load on, on oil, you're gonna see, you know, five to 15 or five to 20 trucks per day.
They would be using Wright Street, correct? I mean, I, I...
I'm not sure about that, to be honest.
Yeah, they would come in from Green Bay and come right off 41 on Wright Street.
That's only when we're running on fuel oil, we have...
We have three fuel farms, three depots here. Got the Shyras, got a huge tank down there. We have four plant with a 500,000 gallon tank, so we can bring fuel oil from those locations to, in the emergency, so that's where the backup is. But I wanted, John, to please comment on firm gas, because we do have firm gas through Northern Natural Gas and Semco now.
Yeah, they're upgrading, Northern Natural Gas is upgrading their gate station this year, and then Semco is going to run a six-inch pipe to our facility. So with Northern Natural Gas, they had to do the upgrade so we could get some firm gas, we can't get it all. So during five months of the winter, we'll have enough gas to run one unit at almost full load. So the only way to get more is if they spend some big money out west, millions of dollars. So, don't know when that'll come, but I think it'll come someday.
Where do they get theirs from? Line 5, do they?
Uh, Northern Natural?
Northern Natural.
Yeah, that comes, that's one of the largest gas transport companies in the nation, so that comes out of, all the way down south into Texas.
Now, in that, in that we have gas to run one unit during the winter, we'll have gas availability for the other two units, but those other two would be interruptible five to 10 days a year during bitter cold snaps that there's a heavy demand from residential industrial load. We would be curtailed, but then we have that, and then we, we do have the two units down at the plant, and Unit 3 is cleaner than Unit 2, it came in after clean air, clean water, so we are really, we scrub that, we're really clean with, with Unit 3 PRB cold, so that's going to run for another 25 years or so, but, so we're good to go on that one.
Yeah, one other point, the other seven months of the year, we can get firm gas because, yeah, during the summer.
Commissioner Port.
Just one question, guys, is it normal operation to be running, be running all three engines at the same time continuously? Is that, is that, is that part of the plan?
That could be part of the plan. I think the dispatch study concluded that the intention is to, is to still use your existing coal assets here, and these units would be used to supplement that generation. Coal is a very cost-effective means of generating, generating electricity still, and then during the, during the winter months, you would certainly be scaling back the, the resub engines. But they are capable of running full load at all times for indefinite periods of time.
But that's not our intention.
I don't believe that's the, the board's intention. Perhaps John or Paul can comment further.
Yeah, when Unit 3, you know, we take spring outage, we may extend that outage and run these longer, and right now we've, we're slated to cut back on two bolt loads of coal, 40,000 tons, so that we would run these in lieu of that. So that's the beginning, and then we'll see how it goes, and we can move from there.
So what we want to protect our community, the nine townships from, are the alerts that we're getting, and we get them periodically. I don't want to go into the granular detail, because some of it is confidential, but we're getting alerts, so when we blew our insulator down and knocked out five plant substation, all the circuits went, it tripped our boiler, and before the safeties could go off, it overpressured and blew a tube, so we had that out for a period of time, but our staff people down there, Tom and the crew, got it back in about 42 minutes. That was the big pop that you heard that one evening. So it took everything offline, and we had it open, and we lost 10,000 customers like that, but we brought them back online. Now, when those events happen in the future, from that plant or from up there, there's councils, there are voice operating systems, they can bring it up, those units in one minute to push megawatts to their grid, so that's what's going to provide us reliability.
Commissioner Cam Benzi.
One, one last question. You can't increase the footprint of the MBLP, correct? I mean, it's kind of split in between, this is Elder Delta, this is MBLP, this is Upco.
That's correct.
But we can sell excess power, correct? On the grid?
Yeah, with the interconnection to ATC, daily, we buy and sell power, depending on price, so.
So if gas is low, I mean, we could potentially...
We could push, yes.
Okay.
And when the, and we see the grid prices change on a five-minute basis, so, and, you know, it's a color map, so when the map changes color, we can start them up and push power, especially if they have long-term problems on the grid, we can push a lot of power.
Okay, so that means more revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Chuck?
Thanks, thanks for the questions.
Appreciate you being here, Paul.
Very, very good questions, and once again, we're really pleased on behalf of our community and townships again to represent the ratepayers here and come up with this project. Thanks for the questions and the invitation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to see the progress, and we look forward to it. Real quick question, it'll be next June that we're up and running? Next June?
Probably May. My sense is that we'll have most of the things wrapped up in March, we'll be doing a number of tests run, and the Northern Natural Gas and Semco will be tying up their operations before January hits, you know, because they've got a lot, plow a lot of stuff on the ground. So we'll have gas available, we expect to be running April 1st. Honorable, at the time, we take on Unit 3 for annual outage, so we usually do that. We just came back from an annual outage for a couple of weeks, and Unit 2 ran, and we were just so powered by it. Good questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Gary.
I just want to add, just visualize those engines coming down Wright Street. They're going to be on a flatbed that's 18 axles long, and it's got how many wheels?
Twenty-six axles, and each wheel rotates 360 degrees, and there's a little, well, joystick, okay? That's what the key's going to look like. You can operate the whole trailer without the semi attachment.
It, it's going to be awesome. Bring your cooler and launchers, we'll have a good time watching it. Thank you.
Okay, now we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is a time when the citizens may ask questions, may, may address the commission, they may also reserve time to speak on an agenda item coming up this evening. We would need your name, address, city or township. So we're going to open public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the commission?
My name is Wes Pernsteiner, I live at 521 East Ohio Street in Marquette, Michigan. I'm also one of the owners of Ordoq Real Estate of 11, 112 through 118 West Spring Street, and a part owner in Ordoq Brewing Company. I would like to reserve time to speak towards item number 11 on the agenda, the abutment sale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Good evening, you're in Malachi at Marquette Drive. I've had the distinct honor and privilege to be at the Borlaiten Power meetings for the past nine months or so, and I have been watching this whole evolution of the Wartzla engines from Finland being put to use in our community. And I was going to mention a couple of things that these gentlemen were going to forget, but they did not forget. The gas line already has been awarded to a local company, and they are in the process of putting that in. And so, most of the contracts have been already awarded, including awarding the contract to Wartzla for 36 some-odd million dollars. When I told Tom, how did it feel to spend 30 some-odd million dollars without having all the appropriate financing? And he said, it is a strange feeling, but the bonds will come. Last week, they had a temporary or interim bond sale that is going to carry them when the other bonds come through, so checks are being written as we speak on that project. So Sergeant Laurentine was correct in saying that everything is moving really, really on a fast scale, because they have their interim bonding already in place, and their final bonding will be occurring in a matter of a couple of weeks. So, very encouraging, and they also informed you as your commissioners that the reliability of the grid is not there, is not guaranteed, and even though there was some controversy early on, the, the reliability in our community is so, so critical. And even when they had that major failure, it was within an hour, they had most of the city back on. And now with the engines, they can fire those up, just like your automobile, switch them on and push power at any given rate, so even more flexibility for our community. So I thank you for supporting the Borlaiten Power, and I'm going to be sitting there listening to how they do that, so my next meeting is tomorrow night, they're observing what they do. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address us?
My name's Daniel Rutz of 721 West College Ave in the city, and I'm just here tonight on behalf of item 7D on the consent agenda, something I take personal interest in and want to be available if there are questions on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Frank Jeffardo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions, Dave. For months, our meeting videos have not contained close-ups of the individual members. The manager said the camera works fine and that he'll speak to the operator. Sometimes it's important to analyze their expressions, especially when the audio was poor or members forget to turn on their microphones. Please record our meetings properly. March 28th, Mr. Conley posed the idea of charging outsiders to use our facilities. The parks director said it's too hard to track, unaware of Mr. Conley's notion of installing parking meters on our beaches like those in California and Melbourne, Florida, where a kind attendant allowed me to walk the beach for 10 minutes and leave the town without spending a dime in the awful place. It's fine to mention meters in the context of stressing how fine our beaches are, but not in the form of an idea for us. That's not who we are, unhospitable like that. We're not LA, Melbourne, or even Traverse. Our parks are cluttered enough without additional distractions. Imagine unsightly meters lining our park and beach lots and visitors needing to worry about their time running out. Many won't pay their fines anyhow, so it's a lose-lose proposition. Our parks are what attract visitors, as Mr. Campana admitted last time, but they also shop downtown, eat in our restaurants, and frequent the bars that this board so highly endorses. If we charge them to enjoy what nature has largely provided us for free, they'll leave with a bad impression and spend their money elsewhere next time. March 28th, Mr. Conley was the lone dissenting vote against suspending the rules to discuss Father Marquette Park. Either he did so to deny my request for discussion, or like Mr. Plord, he trusts the experts too much to question them. They're both asked to realize new ideas might be presented, and discussions educate the viewing public. Votes to discuss items ought always to be unanimous. Mr. Conley's dissenting vote brought last 30, November 30th to mind, when he and Mr. Campana voted against Ms. Campenzi's motion to reinstate closing comment. This I took as a direct insult attributable to Mr. Coin's lingering influence. To no surprise, all three men shared related professions. At least Mr. Conley voted to approve the rules as changed, leaving Mr. Campana the lone dissenting vote. Maybe Dave wanted to get home sooner, but that's doubtful, we know the real reason. Mr. Conley may consider that we're not as far apart on certain issues as he may believe, specifically the hospital, and perhaps some personal traits as well. For example, years ago, he and his wife stomped on the melting ice along the edge of Ridge, Ridge Street like schoolkids. Rather than view this as weird, I thought better of them, realizing they are spirited, while this isn't always how they've acted in here. That one day, though, they brought to mind why I moved here, to enjoy a special place that's blessed with an uncommon majority of unique characters.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We are now going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we support.
Any comments? Seeing none? It's a roll call vote, because there's a resolution involved. City clerk, would you please take the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that passes 5-0. Next, we move to unfinished business. We have one item. It's the Public Art Task Force appointments. City clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at its February 8, 2016 meeting, the city commission passed a motion establishing a public art task force to define and address both existing and future public art in the city. To this effect, the following 10 city residents have volunteered and are being recommended for appointment. Dennis West, Karen Hendricks, Barb Kelly, Derek Christian, Joe Rahm, Carol Pulcher, Jennifer, Jennifer Hill, Victor Harrington, Laura Riley, and Jake Feather, for a term ending for 11/17. Additionally, it is recommended by the city manager and mayor that a member of the city commission be appointed to the task force in order to represent the commission's interest in this matter. The term of the appointment would end on April 11, 2017. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint 10 city residents and one city commissioner to serve as full member of the public art task force for a one-year period. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I'd like to have two motions on this. I'd like to have one motion to appoint the 10 appointees and one motion to appoint the commissioner. Any problems? Okay, could we have a motion to appoint the 10 appointees? Is there a motion, please? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we appoint 10 city residents to serve a full member of the, serve as a full member of the public art task force for a one-year period.
Is there a second? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Let's, we'll vote on that for the 10, 10 named appointees. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries 5-0. Now we need a motion to appoint, have we nominated Commissioner Conley yet? We did the 10, huh?
Have you motioned?
Yeah, I said, have, do we, have we named him, Commissioner Conley, to be the appointee?
I don't think anyone's been appointed.
Appointed, okay. Could we have a motion to appoint Commissioner Conley if he's willing to accept to be the commission member to this art task force? Is there a motion? Someone want to make that motion? Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules.
Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini? Is there, all those in favor say yes.
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 Passes 5-0. We're going to suspend the rules to discuss the situation. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Plord.
I guess I want to know if Commissioner Conley wants to be on the committee. I think that's a fair question to ask.
Actually, yes, I will.
Okay.
Commissioner Baldini, any?
I just want to know if the discussion's going to be... You know, I served on the Arts Master Plan Committee last, so I was, I'd be happy to let a different commissioner serve on this, so I'm thankful Commissioner Conley is willing.
Never, my rule is never volunteer. I'll make the exception.
Okay, you're volunteering. Okay, now we're going to need a motion, we're going to go back, we need a motion to appoint Commissioner Conley to the task force, art task force. Commissioner Plord?
I move that we appoint Commissioner Mike Conley to the art commission task force.
Would there be a second to that motion? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Support.
Okay, we discussed this. See no discussion, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Yes. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think.
Next, we move to new business. I see six items on new business. First item is travel reimbursement for Mayor Campana and Commissioner Plord. Both I and Commissioner Plord will abstain from this vote. Do we have a motion for this agenda item? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Campana in the amount of $70, and Commissioner Mike Port in the amount of $70 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Is there a second to that? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Any... Any discussion? Seeing?
If two people have to abstain, there's three of us left. Is that a majority of the night's forum?
Yes.
That's all I want. Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It passes 3-0 with two abstentions. Next, we move to the next agenda item. It also is a travel reimbursement for the commissioners, for Commissioners Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds and Commissioner Conley. Is there a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds in the amount of $70 and Commissioner Conley in the amount of $275.30 for the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campenzi?
Support.
Comment? Commissioner Baldini?
No comment.
I would like to point out the reason that Commissioner Conley is getting a tad more is because he stayed an extra day and he then had to drive back from the meeting in Lansing. The rest of us came back early because there's an oncoming snowstorm and we wanted to get back. He stayed the extra day or two, so his reimbursement's going to be slightly higher. Okay, we're going to take this to a vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, it passes 3-0 with two abstentions.
4-0, your honor.
Excuse me, 4-0, thank you.
With one abstention.
With one abstention. Thank you.
At least that's what I saw, four votes.
Okay, we move next to, our next agenda item, which is a request to purchase a portion of city-owned property located between the 100 blocks of West Spring and Main Streets. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. The city has received a request from Patrick Moncolary to purchase a portion of parcel 0151030. The city commission previously passed a resolution of intent to sell the same request in October 2014. However, the sale never advanced. City staff offered a right-of-entry permit at no cost to permit the requister to remove the abutment per their reasoning for purchase in the letter. However, the requister still wishes to pursue purchase of the property. Therefore, in accordance with city code, city staff has reviewed the request and prepared a resolution for the commission to consider. Please see attached for the request and associated background information. Fiscal effect to be determined by an appraisal of the property. Recommendation: consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to direct the sale of the property in accordance with city code. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Wes, did you wish to address us before we discuss this? Could you please give us your name, address, et cetera, again, please?
For the record, once again, my name is Wes Pernsteiner, 12521 East Ohio, Marquette, Michigan, and owners, part owners of Ordoq Real Estate and Ordoq Brewing Company on Spring Street. The reason for my addressing the board today, and thank you for the time, is I think the image in here is a little bit misrepresented. It's actually about five feet of that wall that connects to our wall, or connects to one of our building walls. And when that original structure was taken down, the contractor actually punched a hole in our wall. That was before our ownership of it, and that was resolved between the private parties at the time. When we talk about selling this to the group that's looking to buy it, I get a little bit concerned about what they're going to do with it. Though being able to see more of their development agreement, or having a development agreement in front of us, I get a little bit concerned about the impact it might have to both our property and our business. We do have a standing lease with the city to have an easement on the property that is directly adjacent to what they're talking about. And if you're not familiar with the space, we have the wall and there's a sidewalk and a wood platform and ramp that goes up to our upstairs space. That is our ADA access to our second floor is our only ADA access, and I'm concerned that, again, with a development agreement that isn't in front of us, the Monticello's plan might inappropriately disrupt our business and prevent us from being able to move forward. I've heard a little bit from them through discussions with them about what they're doing. I'm not sure that, I agree that all of it's feasible, I'm concerned how that will impact us as a business. I think there were some other good proposals put forward by Mr. Statuich that I think haven't been completely vetted, is why they're not acceptable to the requesting party. And I think, I would like that kind of put back for a little further discussion, maybe even discuss with the planning commission as to what they're looking at doing, if this really fits, and if this is really the best way to move forward for all interested parties. Are there any questions related to that subject specifically, I guess, that I might be able to answer on our property?
So, you're saying that wall that they want to buy covers not only their wall, but some of yours, your property?
Yeah.
Not your property, your building.
Right, right. So, it's all on city property, but about four or five feet extends past our wall, and then there's about 10 feet of alley that they're referencing here being obliterate, but you can't see it from any direction. You have to walk down a private alley between getses and our building to see it. And then the rest is connected to their building, which is the issue and concern here.
So, you're saying that if they were to work on that wall?
I would have some concerns.
It would have impact on your?
If they were to buy the whole wall and take care of it, I have a concern. So, that's the wall itself, but then our sidewalk is right next to that wall. In fact, the concrete touches the wall. So, the process of construction concerns me because we would no longer have ADA access, and the long-term plans that they might have in place might further disrupt that, permanently disrupt that structure for us, or that easement.
Thank you. Stay there, please. We haven't made a motion on this yet. Maybe let's suspend? Suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes, opposed? Passes 5-0. We're going to suspend the rules. We're going to talk about this. Commissioner Campenzi?
I think I was recently appointed to the commission. When this first came up, I mean, I do know that that wall has some structural element to it. However, not only is it attached to different businesses, but that parcel of land going towards the Wells Fargo parking lot, I believe, has some city infrastructure underneath for stormwater, perhaps? Maybe not. It doesn't.
No, the first and foremost, we should be really careful about what kind of liability we claim for ourselves, saying that this wall is structurally supporting another building because it really hasn't been verified by our engineering department. So, I just would like to be careful of that. But as far as a stormwater access, it's not for that. There's a, what we list as like a linear park or whatnot that goes through there that as a parcel itself is not identified as surplus property. However, this wall itself could be considered as such. So, we're really just talking about the actual physical wall next to the applicant's property.
Like, I guess, I think the first thing we need to do would probably be to have
our city engineer come to a conclusion on it, but I'm not in favor of selling a wall that affects an adjacent property owner's property. So, that's my opinion.
Commissioner Conley?
And furthermore, city ordinance requires that we have, that the seller, or the buyer, I'm sorry, the buyer, perform, or have an appraisal done at the buyer's cost. That's an ordinance. We'd have to change the ordinance in order to follow the request of the buyer.
That's correct. Commissioner Baldini?
I was just agreeing that the ordinance prohibits, looks like prohibits the sale, or doesn't prohibit the sale. You can sell it, but some things have to be done. As I understand, you're concerned about what the other owners may do with the wall.
You know, I'm not against development. I'm not against them developing that building. It's actually a building with great character. I'm more, I'm concerned with the process. And then, I guess I should reclarify. I have heard that they want to, two things, use the wall to become their new wall because it's very sound and it's strong, or take it out and create a front store, storefront access to a couple of storefronts. When you do that, they'd have to bring it down to ground level grade, which would put our sidewalk, which they're right next to each other, they touch each other about six feet in air, which obviously wouldn't work. We'd have to build a new ADA access.
I, you know, I think it's a fairness issue that if we did sell it, we should almost offer it to the other person also, whether we can or not. I mean, we can't necessarily sell it, but in other words, it sounds like you want to.
Well, related to that, I don't.
Stop them because you hear they may take some action which will impact you, and I think we as a city probably should be cautious about.
Sure. In full disclosure, we offered to buy the property. I forget when that one was, Dennis, not including the wall, because as a private company, we can't afford to take on the liability that that wall might have related to the Monticello's building. It's more without having a better definition of what they're going to do and how they're going to go about doing it. That makes me nervous. And I know the agreement would have to have terms of a development plan in place, but I would want to have certain confidences that they're going to execute it, or that if they're not going to execute it, they're going to maintain the condition of the wall. Stones have fallen off that wall. I would want to have some confidence that they're going to maintain the condition of it if they're not going to develop it.
Could I ask the city attorney what he thinks of this situation?
Well, I can tell you, there's been some history and it's been a little bit frustrating on our part. Someone wanted to buy the wall, then they didn't want to buy the wall. Someone else wanted to buy the wall, the other party was okay with it. Now, here they were, someone's nervous about it. So, I honestly don't know where we are, and maybe Dennis knows, because we've been through this so many times.
Oh, that's a.
I'm really sick of this wall, to be honest with you. Someone ought to either buy it or don't buy it. I don't care, but you should do, you know, you can't come here and tell us that it was okay for them to go ahead with this purchase. We tee it up that way, and then we get here and it's not okay. And that's the frustrating part for our, because we're spending a lot of time on this, and we've been doing it for a couple of years now. Dennis?
I have nothing to add, sir. It's been back and forth quite a bit, and Wes had even mentioned, you know, the person that wants to purchase isn't here, but we had offered them, look, if you really want to take down the wall, we'll give you a right-of-entry permit at no cost. You relieve us of liability and you can go take down the wall, and then it's done. And that wasn't good enough. So, this is one of those things where you drag the horse right to the water and you can't get it to drink. So, I don't know.
Well, I see the big problem being that, yes, the other people want to buy it, but we didn't realize that it affects his building.
Oh, yes, we did. We understand all the parameters. We've tried a number of different legal vehicles, but we can't get anyone, as Dennis says, to drink. We get up to the water, to the well, but we can't get up to drink. And so, I don't know, I don't know the answer to it, to be honest with you.
What happens if we sell the wall to this?
Someone else will own it if we resell it.
Yeah, but then, and he does something to it and it affects his business.
You know, we own the wall. We can sell it whatever we want. That's a problem that you'll have to deal with. And I'm not making a recommendation that we buy or sell or do anything. I'm just saying we bring it to the commission after we think we have what we understood both parties agreed to, and now it is as clear as I thought it was.
I have a question for city staff, and whoever feels, you know, best able to answer the question. The question is, is this something that we want to do as a city, to sell the wall? But if it's to our advantage to do that?
The wall itself brings no municipal use to the city. It's not being used for any municipal operation. It's not part of any plans for the future of the city, and that's what the planning commission bases. Every year, the planning commission goes through a municipal property inventory, and they identify parcels of land that are either being used for recreation, a park, stormwater, road right of way, you know, things that would have municipal use. And then there's other city property that isn't listed as such.
So, there's no real reason to keep this for the city? Something we probably should sell to somebody.
If the property purchase request was for not only the wall, but everything fronting on Front Street, then the recommendation would be not to sell it because it's identified as a potential corridor or future recreation corridor. But the wall itself, it's kind of a no-man's-land. Now, what I believe was offered in the resolution to the city commission is that if you chose to do the resolution to sell the property, there is, there are conditions that could be placed on the sale of the property that would include, number one, they have to meet the intent of the ordinance and get an appraisal for the property. And number two, any sale is subject to drafting and execution of a local development agreement that ensures they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
So, then the property doesn't become theirs until they finish that activity, or the?
Correct, yeah. That's the caveat that was recommended, is, okay, we understand there's some concerns about everybody involved here. One of the ways you can accomplish that is through drafting and execution of a local development agreement that says upon purchase of the property, we're going to A, tear down the wall, or B, we're going to leave the wall up and use it as part of our building. And A, if we tear the wall down, here's how we're going to rectify and reconcile the other adjacent city property because there's going to be a six-foot drop. That's a possible solution.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
I move that we postpone consideration of the purchase of this retaining wall until we've received an appraisal from the proposed buyer.
Is there a second to that? Commissioner Campenzi?
I would support. And then, I guess, we'll deal with whether or not we come up with a local support. We'll leave it.
Any comments? Commissioner Conley?
This will give additional time. There's been an appraisal requested in the past that hasn't happened. It may or may not happen at this point. There'll be some time then for two adjacent property owners to further discuss this and come up with an offer. But until we have an appraisal, we can't buy ordinance, sell it.
Commissioner Campenzi, anything? Any other comments? Seeing none? We're going to vote on, we did say to table it.
Postpone it.
Postpone it. Table it. All those in favor, please, excuse me. This is not a roll call, is it?
No.
Okay, because we're not selling it, we're not, okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Passes 5-0. We're going to table this. Okay, next, our next agenda item is a resolution supporting the appeal of the appointment of Marcus Abboud to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. City Clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. At their meeting on April 5, 2016, the Marquette Charter Township Board passed a resolution to appeal the appointment of Marcus Abboud to the Michigan Tax Tribunal as proposed by Governor Rick Snyder. Marquette Charter Township has reached out to the city of Marquette to pass a similar resolution. It is recommended that the Marquette City Commission approve the attached resolution to demonstrate support for the appeal of the appointment of Marcus Abboud to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: consider supporting the resolution to appeal the appointment of Marcus Abboud to the Michigan Tax Tribunal and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for this? Commissioner Plort?
I move that we support the resolution to appeal the appointment of Marcus Abboud to the Michigan Tax Tribunal and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Campenzi?
Support.
Any comment? Commissioner Plort?
This is part of the dark story issue, obviously, and I fully agree with Marquette Township. I like what they're doing about it. There are other municipalities around UP and around the state that are going to do the same thing. This lends a voice to the city of Marquette to this situation, which is creeping further and further around the state as I speak right now. I think it needs to be stopped. Marcus Abboud is a big, big push, a big, big player in that, in that. player in that, in that, that whole situation.
Commissioner Cam Benzi, anything?
I'd have to agree with Commissioner Plard. I recently found out how these tax tribunals started and why in the UP we were kind of picked as, as the place to go and try this out. There's one law firm in Detroit that actually is going out and soliciting these box stores, basically coming to them with an offer saying that at no cost to them, except for the first year's savings, they will represent them in these tax tribunal cases. And in the UP where we don't have money to fight it, as we've seen with our neighbors in Market Township, they don't have money to fight it, we barely have money to fight this. And it's successful as long as the legislation isn't there. So I think all of us need to take a strong stand on this. I think, you know, there's more to be done, there's a lot more to be done to stop this. This is a tragedy. When you look at Market Township's budget from a few years ago, they are at almost half of their budget due to these tax tribunals, that's devastating. So I really think we need to support our neighbors, we need to support this. But we need a fix, and all of us standing together can only be better.
Commissioner Conley?
This resolution will supplement the legislative efforts to turn around the dark store issue, and I think we need to fight on both counts.
Any other comments? I'm highly in favor of this resolution, I think it's well-needed, timely. And I, I do commend Market Township for taking initiative on this. It's well-needed, for the reasons stated. Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Excuse me?
Wait, 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 this is a resolution. Sucked you guys in, didn't I?
Yep.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that passes five-zero. Okay, we got two to go. The next one is a change order, is change order number two for renovations at 1100 Wright Street, which is the new service center. City clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at its meeting on December 14, 2015, the city commission approved the purchase agreement for the property owned by Organics Inc. and located 1100 Wright Street for the purpose of inclusion in the new municipal service center campus and use during the interim period while the new facility is being constructed. Prior to purchase of this property, which includes four buildings, the city's project architect provided a detailed preliminary evaluation. The evaluation provided information on operational issues with the site and buildings, anticipated cost savings to the municipal service center project, and anticipated expenses needed to utilize the site and buildings. The initial evaluation indicated the property purchase would provide a positive impact to the project and city in both a short and long-term analysis based on approximate cost savings to the MSC project of between $920,000 and $1,000, $1,050,000, and additional expenses of between $170,000 and $230,000. Net savings could be anticipated to be between $750,000 and $820,000, exclusive of any additional financial benefit from continuing the lease of the south building. The city's current plan for the Organics facility is for interim operations of normal Department of Public Works services after vacating the current site and during construction of their new facilities. Long-term plans include similar operations at a lesser level, as well as secure citywide storage. Specific renovations needed for the interim use of the Organics facility have anticipated with cost estimates provided by Gunlock Champion, our design-build contractor. The renovations are planned for the spring/summer of 2016 and necessary before winter operations begin in the fall of 2016. Fiscal effect, the renovation expenses will be funded with money obtained from the sale of the existing municipal service center. The remaining balance of the proceeds of this sale is adequate to cover this project. Recommendation, approve the renovation project at 1100 Wright Street based on the proposal provided by Gunlock Champion Inc. in an amount not to exceed $287,255. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that approve, that we approve the renovation project at 1100 Wright Street based on the proposal provided by Gunlock Champion in an amount not to exceed $287,255.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I second.
Comments? Commissioner Baldini?
I, I think the rationale read by the clerk, the background, provides a documentation, and I think we're gonna see a couple of other ones pertaining to the Wright Street simply because the purchase of the new property is saving us money in certain instances. And so, if we can, as long as we can do that, so much is better, so...
Commissioner Plard?
Again, this is part of the project, it's just moving forward, it's something that we need to do. And as Commissioner Baldini mentioned, the documentation is there in the background. And there are certain things that we just need to get done for winter.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'm gonna go ahead and support this change order. My main reason being, one, the significant savings, but two, currently we do not have the salt, sand storage shed in our current municipal building, and I, staff could remind me of what the cost is of that?
Well, a new, a new salt storage will be half a million dollars, $500,000. And that is one of our alternate options for the new service center. The current plan is to refurbish this to accommodate operations for next winter while utilizing one of those buildings as a temporary salt storage. The current building that we're going to be using really isn't big enough, and we're hoping that we have savings over the course of the bidding process to build the actual salt barn we want to build. But in the meantime, the Organics, we're, sorry, we're on, we're calling it the Cityplex now. Trying to get Organics out of the mix. I forgot where I was going, but the current salt barn, one of the current buildings there we're gonna use is a temporary salt barn. And, but to build a new one, it's half a million.
I guess just knowing how vital that is to city operations with winter extending into nine months of the year. I, I, this is one of the items I really think is critical to get back on, on the list to do, so I will support this.
I think this is gonna be a good expenditure. If you do the addition and subtraction, we're still coming out ahead on this. We were fortunate to buy this property with the four buildings on it, so we're ahead of the game with this, so I would be in favor of this. Any more comments? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Passes five-zero. We are at our last agenda item. It is the purchase of a tandem dump truck with an underbody scraper, material spreader, and patrol ring. City clerk, could you please give us the background on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Department of Public Works utilizes eight snow-removal routes to ensure that city streets are plowed efficiently after a significant snowfall. Each route has a dedicated plow assigned to it with two other plows used as backup units. Due to aging equipment and mechanical failures, both backup plows were placed into a plow route this winter, leaving no available backup units. As part of the fiscal year 2015-16 capital outlay process, motor pool staff requested funding to purchase a new plow truck to help strengthen the aging fleet. Bid documents were advertised and sent to six regional vendors that specialize in truck equipment. Five vendors responded to this request. Of the five bids received, four did not meet specifications. Wisconsin Kenworth Monroe of Green Bay, Wisconsin met all bid specs as required. Staff designed the specifications to ensure the plow truck would provide 25-plus-year service at a reduced maintenance levels when compared to other units in our current fleet. Fiscal effect, lending mining and maintenance fund for fiscal year 2015-16 contains $250,000 for this purchase. Recommendation, approve the purchase of a tandem dump truck with underbody scraper, material spreader, and patrol wing from Wisconsin Kenworth Monroe of Green Bay, Wisconsin in an amount not to exceed $232,882. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Could I first ask our city manager to give us some, a little more information on this, please?
Sure, thank you. First of all, this was budgeted during our budget process for this year, so it is in the budget. And I would like to advise the commission that our superintendent of Motor Pool and Facilities, Eric Steeman, is here and can fill you in on significant details. So if you'd like to ask him questions, or if you'd like a couple of minutes of explanation first, I can do that as well. What's your preference?
Do we have, well, first we need a motion, I would think.
Sure.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I recommend that we approve the purchase of a tandem dump truck with underbody scraper, material spreader, and patrol wing from Wisconsin Kenworth Monroe of Green Bay, Wisconsin in an amount not to exceed $232,882.
Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Comments?
Uh, this, this did come...
Give us your name, address, or city or township. Anybody wish to address, I'm gonna open a public here, or a public comment at this point. Anybody wish to address the commission?
Frank Cheverdo, 350 East Ridge Marquette, these are my opinions. You've ignored concerns about the founder's phasing plan that shows Barriga Street Extension Parking north of Parcel 3. The original plan of 2009 called for a single 220-space parking structure, yet subsequent to this board's direction, staff requested information from the MBRA which identifies costs for developing two parking decks. The Brownfield Chair said the MBRA can't maintain the structure forever, and quoted the architect as saying maintenance was not included in the plan. A consultant said the plan stated that the city would finance these structures as well as own and operate them. Mr. Campana added, "It is a city asset, so it should be maintained by the city," end quote. So I was maintenance not included. Mr. Vita's report shows the developers' projections for revenue won't be sufficient to pay off the bonds and loans. A man who's also researched this said, "The whole scheme is a bit shrouded as to its intent. The misleading nature of how the agreement removes the city from financial risk actually obligates the city. They'll approve anything to fill a hole in the ground without studying the viability," end quote. After 15 years of acquaintanceship with Mr. Campana, I can't imagine him voting against closing comment or often looking down while we speak. Unlike Mr. Coyne and Stonehouse, Dave doesn't look down out of spite, but he's likely reviewing unrelated matter to keep the meetings flowing smoothly. These meetings are harder to run than we can imagine, and Dave's done a better job than most, well enough to show us courtesy, being that our comments are mandated to pass through him. In fact, his performance is admirable to the point that one blemish against his public orientation is especially bothersome. He heard Mr. Ryan and others explain the obvious needs for closing comment. So why his nay vote? The likely reason is Mr. Coyne's influence still pervaded him on November 30th. Mr. Coyne served as Dave's mentor during their years on this board, and he put many thousands of dollars in Dave's pocket prior to their retirements. I added a few dollars to your coffre, too, but a fraction of Mr. Coyne's contributions. Money talks, not to discount my appreciation of Dave's caring service. You were the best, so why not offer your best to the public as well? The issue remains that you were in the lone vote to deny us this opportunity. Now that you've displayed a mind of your own, please explain your vote, or tell us you'd have voted yes had Mr. Coyne's influence still not prevailed. We've all heard Mr. Coyne play on people's sympathies as if imploring them to tell him, "Oh, Mike, you're such a kind person, how can that horrible man treat you this way? It's so bad." But all Mike needed to do was act equal to us. Yet he lacked the wherewithal, which we all know isn't the case with you. Please help us clear up this one inconsistency. Just tell us you'd have voted differently, and the matter will be forgiven.
Frank, thank you for the compliment, it's good to hear that. I have to comment. I want to make one thing clear, you said that I have taken thousands of dollars from Michael Coyne. That is totally not true, I have taken not one penny from him.
Well, the prescriptions, I mean.
That has, that has no bearing on it. That's totally untrue. I was in a line of business and we had a business relationship.
I meant, I'm sorry, Dave, that's...
Okay, well, I don't want people to think that I'm on the payroll for Mike Coyne.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next we move to comments from the commission. I will start with Commissioner Baldini.
A lot this evening, I mean, I was just looking and thinking about it, and I don't think I'm gonna review the whole thing, or we could be here till closing time at 10, but, I mean, we had this college students with us talking about sustainability for the city, girls hockey team that won the state championship, the positive report at the schools, the report on the Board of Light and Power. Really, a lot going forward, and I don't think I'm gonna take time. There's two comments I do want to make. I think we should try and pursue the hockey voting somehow, because whatever money we can get on that side, we don't have to take out of our side, okay? If I may be so capitalistic about this, but I wonder if we we have it on our website, maybe the city manager has some ideas as to how we promote it. Maybe he can do it when he gets on the talk shows. Maybe we can do a guest editorial in the Mining Journal or something to try and promote this, but it's worth our effort, I think, and tell people how to vote. Secondly, I was approached the other day by a group of people who were running the free store in the city of Marquette where they, people could come and get free goods, clothing, things of that nature, and they've been closed down, and they're looking for someplace to relocate. And I, that's not something the city would do, but they did want to get the word out that they, I think they were at a church that closed, and they're concerned about that, so... But it was, it's been a long evening, but quite a productive, interesting evening, and we've, I think it's been a good evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Plard?
I think Commissioner Baldini did a great job of summing up the evening, I have absolutely nothing to add.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
It is, has been a long evening, but I want to point out two things, one of which has already been pointed out. Our Department of Public Works Director Goodman and Eric Steeman and his staff in the motor pool just saved us from buying a truck that wasn't gonna last, and I thank you. And something else that was on the consent agenda and didn't come right out and obvious was, they're keeping a 27-year-old truck on the road, they're saving us money. That thing is still operating, and so I want to thank them for doing that. It's, it's a ton of money to buy a new one, and ours is still working 27 years later, so thanks for your efforts. It also points out why you pay attention to specs, because you can keep good trucks that are bid to spec on the road to start with. So there's a couple of lessons here. And thank you for your efforts. And pass, if you would, tomorrow, if you'd pass it on to your motor pool staff and pass on the commission's things.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Well, in agreement with Commissioner Conley, hopefully, that truck you're keeping on the road isn't the one with the floorboards rotting through, so... I don't want to know if it is. Oh, gosh. At our 6:00 PM work session, we had four NMU college students come forward and volunteered to do a Marquette waste characterization study in which we had very valuable feedback. They presented that to us, I'd like to thank the residents. They had about 20% of residents actually take the survey, which was great, I think we've got some great feedback. Hopefully, we'll be making some changes soon to positively reflect what they've done for us. The M Bank U-19 girls hockey, congratulations to them. I always say that I wish I had that opportunity. Hockey was not a girl's sport in Marquette when I was growing up, there were a few that played. They had to play with the boys, so to have a full team up here as a woman, I think that's one of the most, I guess, happiest things on tonight's agenda. The MAPS Bond, I think that was a great explanation of why it's needed. You can visit their website, www.mapsnet.org, to find out more information and educate yourself before the vote in early May. Lastly, the MBLP update, I think that was good that they came back and did that for the community. I know there were a lot of questions answered. I think a lot of people are wondering how they're gonna get those units to their... I think a lot of people are wondering how they're going to get those units to their offices on Wright Street, so I'd like to thank them for sharing that and coming here tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to point out, we had a large number of Boy Scouts here tonight, Cub Scout, Boy Scouts, they were. And they were here to apparently take in the commission meeting for what we do, how we do it, probably for a civic badge of some sort. But I give them credit. They sat through much longer than I expected them to. They were starting to get a little fidgety at the end, but they are our future leaders, and I'm glad they were here, and they were very polite, and it was good to see them here. Hope they come back. Second of all, I guess I want to apologize for if we seemed unprepared for the sale of the wall, but I think we were not ready for what we found out, and I hope, before it comes up again, that we will be able to easily deal with it. It shouldn't be that complicated. Thank you. City Manager, you're up.
Thank you. Well, just regarding that wall, I think this is probably the fifth time we've tried to sell it to the same people. And I can concur with Ron and Dennis. It's rather frustrating. Not on your part, but on the part of the buyers, and quite honestly, up until an hour ago, we thought that the OrdoC people were okay with the sale. They said they were last time we talked to them, so I apologize for that. I have community office hours this Wednesday. Put the hammer down. I have community office hours this Wednesday. If you'd like to join me at the library, ten o'clock. Mr. Mayor, you usually are there with me, and I'm, and Mike Plard might be there, Commissioner Plard might be again, or any commissioner is more than welcome. And I have to ask, did I mention about the B L P. delivery, engine delivery to you folks? I didn't realize they'd chosen a, a path until tonight, and city staff is working very diligently with them to make sure that whatever path they choose is done efficiently and safely, and one of their options is to look at the beach area off of Wright Street, which I'm assuming will take a considerable amount of work. And lastly, I just want to thank you for all your support tonight. We got through a lot of stuff, and I'll be the first to admit I can load up an agenda when I want to, so, thank you.
This being the longest commission meeting in at least the last six months, I would like to adjourn.